19, Common Council Meeting. Clerk, will you please take the role?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
All right, here.
Herman.
Here.
Crowsey.
Here.
Mugerower.
Here.
Peschall.
Present.
Paul Mary.
Here.
Carried six.
And we'll have our invocation by Councilmember Osby this evening, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Miranda King and Madeline King from Webster Stanley. I'd like to present you with your certificates. And if you could say your name, the school you attend, the grade, and your favorite subject.
My name is Miranda. I go to Webster Stanley Elementary, and I am in fifth grade, and my favorite subject is math.
My name is Madeline. I go to Webster Stanley Middle School, and I'm in eighth grade, and my favorite subject
Thank you very much. Enjoy your evening. Next, we have a proclamation for a day of prayer in the city of Oshkosh. Would Michael Stutz please come forward?
Whereas the Continental Congress first declared a national day of prayer in 1775, making national days of prayer a longstanding American tradition; and whereas the national day of prayer became law in 1952, when unanimously passed by Congress and signed by President Harry S Truman; and whereas May 2, 2019, marks the 68th Annual National Day of Prayer; and whereas the theme for 2019 is "Love One Another." Based on John 1334, "Love one another just as I have loved you, so you must love one another." And whereas millions of people from coast to coast will create a huge wave of prayer illustrating the unity of God's people over the circumstances facing us during this critical time for our nation, and now therefore I, Lori Paul Mary, Mayor of the city of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 2, 2019, as a day of prayer in the city of Oshkosh. And I encourage our fellow citizens to join in prayer, seeking God's grace and asking Him to touch the minds and hearts of our people and our leaders, so that we may meet the challenges that lie before us with courage, wisdom, and justice.
Thank you, Mayor Paul Mary. Thank you for this proclamation. Many people aren't even aware that in the United States there is a national day of prayer, and which she read in the proclamation. It happened in 1952, when our Congress decided that this should be something we should be doing each year, and it was signed into law by Harry Truman. And in Oshkosh, for many years, we've been having a celebration on this first Thursday of May, which is the 2nd of May, which is the week after next. So it's not this Thursday, but the following Thursday. We gather around the flagpole, right out in front of City Hall here, 12 o'clock noon, for about 45 minutes. We have some songs and some prayers. We pray for our leaders, local, state, federal. Anyone's welcome, especially if you believe in the power of prayer. We just ask you to come and enjoy the time together, and we get to exercise our freedoms of worship here in this country. Thank you.
Next, we have citizen statements to council. The first opportunity. Do we have anyone registered?
No one is registered.
Thank you. And following that, the consent agenda items. Is there anyone registered to speak on the consent agenda?
We have no one registered.
We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Seeing none, can we take the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Next, we have pending ordinances. Do we have anyone registered to speak on 19-259?
We do not have anyone registered.
We have a motion and a second on 19-259.
So moved.
Second.
My apologies. Let me read that. Approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district SMU to multifamily residential 12, MR 12, at the 1400 block of Osborne Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Can we take the roll on that, then?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Next is ordinance 19-260. Approve official mapping for 30-foot-wide Riverwalk along the north shore of the Fox River at 1005 High Avenue, Axel Tech International. Plan Commission recommends approval. We have a motion and a second on that.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, can we call the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
And new ordinances. The first two new ordinances require no formal action. Number 19-261. Do we have anyone registered to speak on 19-261?
No, we do not.
Okay, 19-261. Approve amendments to Chapter 6 of the Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to keeping of urban chickens and bees. No action. And then ordinance 19-262. Do we have anyone registered for that?
No one is registered.
19-262. Approve parking regulation change for the Algoa lot stalls 37 through 39. No action taken on that tonight. And then ordinance 19-263. Do we have anyone registered to speak on 19-263?
No one is registered.
And this one is approving closure to Otter Avenue at the railroad crossing on Broad Street. Staff recommends waiving the rules and adapting on the first reading. We'll need a motion and second for waiving the rules and adapting on the first reading.
I make a motion to waive the rules and adopt on the first reading for ordinance 19-263.
Any discussion? Clerk, can we? Councilmember Peschall.
Thank you. So what, just for the citizens, what's the benefit of waiving this to make a decision on it today?
Based on the schedule that the railroad submitted for doing the work on the crossing, their requested schedule would need the rules to be waived and adopt on the first reading. Otherwise, there would be some back and forth, I suppose, with the railroad as far as trying to delay their requested schedule.
So, does bringing this up sooner than later get the work done sooner?
Yeah, their schedule that they have requested would be getting this done between April 29 and May 10.
And so, and if we didn't adopt this today, we wouldn't have a set schedule like that?
Right. We would no longer have a set schedule. We would have to go back to them and say, you know, the schedule that you had requested has not been approved, you know, please come up with an alternate schedule. That would be after the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on waiving the rules? Seeing none. Clerk, can we take the roll on waiving the rules and adapting on first reading?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Now, we'll need a motion and a second to adapt.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, can we take the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Moving on to new resolutions. 19-264. Approve conditional use permit to establish a multifamily development, 1400 block of Osborne Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Do we have anyone registered to speak on this?
No one is registered.
Discussion? I'm sorry, motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Mugerower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's really just a comment for the developer and at least one of the neighbors who I know is here as well. I want to commend both of you, from both sides of this development, for working with the Plan Commission and working together. I know that some of the neighbors had some concerns with how the development might be laid out originally, and I think if more developers took the approach that Nicolay here has and this group has, things would get along a lot better in this community more often. You guys worked together with city staff and without city staff to try to come up with something that worked for the neighborhood a little bit better, and I applaud you guys for that and how you both worked together. So, I don't know if either one of you wanted to speak. I know you didn't register, but if you had anything you wanted to say to either one or to the council, here's your chance. But I just wanted to recognize both parties on this front on how you guys work together.
Joe Furlough, 1230 Devonshire Drive. And we are, our house was probably the most affected, most dramatically by the work that was here. And I just want to echo that, given the situation and given the way things are, we could not have asked for more cooperative and more sensitive dealings on the part of the developer and the part of the Plan Commission, on the part of individual members who visited, and the part of some of you who visited. Obviously, for us, it was the biggest deal of all, and I can't imagine a developer being more generous than were these developers in working with us. We were able to save trees, we were able to save, to help us utilize some area that we had come to enjoy, has had prior owners. I think we found a way to be good neighbors. And as much as I would love to see lovely trees forever, I can't imagine a better outcome for us than has happened with the results of the conversations between everyone. We should all do business this way. So, thank you all, and thank you to you, and thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Furlough. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And I guess I'd just like to say thank you also for patiently persisting on the topic in such a courteous and civil manner. I think that probably paves the way for many future options as well. All right. Any further discussion? And can we take the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Next, we have Resolution 19-265. Approve agreement with Rogan Stores of Oshkosh LLC, Thomas Masters, and Phoenix Realty LLC for the city's administration of idle industrial sites redevelopment grant. Is there anyone registered to speak on 19-265?
No one is registered.
Have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Mugerower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Davis, if you wouldn't mind just stepping up to the podium. I think we know what this is about, but maybe the people at home wouldn't mind just the short clarification. It seems as though we're a little bit ahead of the ball on this one, but there's a reason why, and maybe we can explain that.
Yes. The city has applied for a grant through WEDC to help with the redevelopment of this site. That's independent of the TIP application they're working on right now, and there's a certain timeline we have to hit to make sure they're eligible for the WEDC funding for this fiscal year. So, that's why we pushed this to WEDC. They're still reviewing it, but our expectations are they'll be scoring very well, and we want to have this grant agreement in place so that when WEDC makes the award, we're ready to go with the grant part. The TIP application is still a separate item that has not been submitted yet.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Clerk, can you please take the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Next is Resolution 19-266. Approve special event, Oshkosh Rotary Club, to utilize Leach Amphitheater Riverside Park and parking lot for the 4th of July celebration, July 4, 2019. Do we have anyone registered to speak on 19-266?
No one is registered.
And we have a motion and a second for this?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Osby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that, you know, obviously, you know, there were some things in the media that we were not going to be having an event at Menominee Park, and I would like to congratulate those in the community that did come together very swiftly, very quickly, and very responsibly to try to provide something family-friendly for the community. And so, you know, in my humble opinion, we need to give things a try, and I'm certainly confident in those that came together to try to put something that I believe will appeal to a wide range of citizens, both in and outside of Oshkosh, that have typically attended our July 4 celebration.
Councilmember Mugerower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I got to echo Councilmember Osby's statements. I want to thank the Oshkosh Rotary Club for coming together and taking, you know, spearheading it. I know that's not a single person and a single organization. There's a few that are coming together and collaborating to try to provide the community a nice event on July 4 in our downtown city center. So, thank you for that. You know, in regards to some of the stuff that's been said publicly, and, you know, social media is always fun, I think this is the right time for a small change. And whether or not it stays there permanently, or whether it goes back, you know, that's for a discussion after the fact and next year. Especially with the road construction that's planned for Hazel this year, making that already a fun night of travel even worse, that this location is a very good alternative for one year, at the very least. I know one of the previous, the biggest things was containing the alcohol and the police presence that was required with some of the alcohol sales. And the Leach Amphitheater is a great venue for a music event that sells alcohol. It is a fantastic location for it, and I'm hopeful and very optimistic for the success of this event and very supportive of it as well. So, thank you for those that put it together.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mauer, could you just kind of bring everybody up to speed where we're at, what's going on, what is the event, who's all behind it?
Sure, I can start out, and I'll ask that maybe Lori Renning can step forward, who's also helped spearheading the project. As Councilmember Mugerower stated, the Rotary Clubs of Oshkosh have really stepped forward and taken the reins on this project. Between Lori and a group of interested citizens and businesses, they've been meeting ever since Sawdust Days notified us that they'd be discontinuing. I think they've got a great event lined up with food trucks, face painting, a DJ behind the convention center in Riverside Park, which will be all free. Not the food trucks, it'll be paying for food, obviously. But a family event that people can come down to Riverside Park, enjoy some DJ, kids activities, family activities. Inside the Leach, they are planning to have music throughout the day. I believe they have the Oshkosh Symphony is already booked, along with Corey Chisel, and he is doing some other promotion for some music. So throughout the day, there will be music at the Leach. A very nominal entry fee or admission there to help defray some of the costs that they'll have for some of their expenses, which I, what I really want to praise is that they reached out to the Amvets group, and the Amvets have agreed to operate the concessions at the Leach. They are not being charged anything, and they're going to be taking all the profit from those sales. So, after losing their big fundraiser through Sawdust Days, they're very happy and proud to be coming to the Leach and being able to take on additional fundraiser. The event, I believe, is scheduled to end at 9:30 officially, and we talk about fireworks later on in the agenda. What we are hoping to do is, behind the convention center, we now have the capability to broadcast music. Because of the ice rink, we installed a PA system. So at the Leach and at the convention center, we're hoping that we'll be having some themed music for the fireworks show that we'll be able to have on, going on during the show. And that's one of the reasons you'll see their request for an extension of amplified music, because the fireworks show may go until approximately 10:30 or so. So we wanted to make sure that that was covered, and that be the reason for the extension request. If there's any questions?
Yeah, just one more. Because it might get brought up in the next resolution. If not, can you just talk a little bit about the parking and what streets are going to be blocked off so people can enjoy the festivities?
Sure. When we took a look at the public parking lots available in the downtown, we were able to identify, obviously, a number of city-owned parking lots, not only in the downtown, but if you take a look at South Main Street, you have the Fugelberg Boat Launch, you have the 24th Avenue Boat Launch, which will be a great observation point for the fireworks, pretty much clear viewing along the river or the lake. Talking with the police department, Chief Smith is recommending that we close down Pioneer Drive, the entire section for, from vehicle traffic, so pedestrians and families will be allowed to congregate, set up chairs, and utilize that entire space. We feel that there will be a lot of opportunity to have pedestrians and, you know, chairs and so forth in that area. A number of businesses have already told us they plan to stay open on the 4th of July that may have closed. I know a number of businesses are encouraging people to use their parking lots, come in and spend some money at their store, and then go down to the park. We, I recently reached out to UW Oshkosh, and we're encouraging people also to park maybe a little bit further away, just like they would at Menominee Park. A lot of that was residential street parking, so they had to walk quite a ways. With the Riverwalk, we have a nice opportunity to get down to the Leach and Riverside Park. So we reached out to the University of Oshkosh, talked to their parking and transit, and because it's a holiday, they do not enforce in their parking lots. So I asked if they would be agreeable to let people, the public, park in their parking lots. He said it's open to the public, there will not be enforcement. I reached out to Fox Valley Technical College, I'm waiting a phone call back from them. But we also have the Senior Center, which is a city-operated facility that has ample parking, that people can, again, get onto the trail system and come downtown.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Crowsey.
In the actual application, it says no amplified music later than 11:00 PM, but then in the actual written application, it says no later than 10:00 PM.
Right.
So which one is it?
When the group put in their request, they had it for 10:00 PM, assuming that that was when they're going to end. In our discussions about the fireworks potentially relocating, they are agreeable to having that amended in the resolution to allow amplified music up to 11:00, and for the same reason that I explained. So it was after they put their application in.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peschall.
Sure. Thank you for this. I think it's a great gift to our community that this event is still continuing to go on. So, there's a couple vacant lots in that area, in the south shore area, that are off of South Main. Are those going to be utilized as spaces where people can watch the fireworks from, or is that a potential parking area?
Are you referring to the city-owned parking lots?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say that any-
No, I'm sorry. They're not parking lots. They're vacant lots that the city owns. And I think I'm actually talking out of order now that I think about it, because I think this relates to the next resolution, so.
Would you like to say that?
I would.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on 19-266? Seeing none, can we call the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution 19-267. Approve Pioneer Island as the site for the July 4, 2019 Festival Foods fireworks show. Do we have anyone registered to speak?
No one is registered.
Okay. Bring it back for motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Peschall.
I don't want to ask the question again, but can we attempt to answer it?
Sure. Speaking with Mr. Furlough, and any vacant lots that the city does own, we would say they're open and available, not for parking, but for public viewing spaces. That would definitely be an option.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah. Thanks for mentioning that, because anything we can do to let people know that there'll be lots of accessible sites, and I'm sure other people are going to step forward as time goes on, and, you know, because for blankets and chairs, it's really not that big of an ask, so we'll be out there.
Thank you. Now, also with the Menominee Nation Arena in the, you know, in that vicinity, is that going to be an area where residents can, where guests can park or view the fireworks from that area?
In speaking with the committee that's been organizing the event, I think that's one of the businesses they're going to talk to about possibly either allowing public to park there, or if they want to offer an event or some music or something in their parking lot to get people into that area. I think their intent is, and our intent is, to go along the Riverwalk and encourage the businesses along the Riverwalk to participate during that day, so that people are encouraged to, you know, join their businesses, get down to the Riverwalk, and then come down to the festivities as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I just had one kind of follow-up question, and I think this is extremely exciting for catalytic reasons in the Sawdust District, for activating and engaging the Riverwalk itself. So I'm really excited. I'm just disappointed that I'm not going to be here for that. But in any event, my question is just kind of a follow-up, and actually, City Manager, I asked, we talked about this before, is there an opportunity, or are there any discussions going on about possible, like, a park-and-ride type situation, either with Go Transit, or Titan Transit, or any of those other?
Yeah. I had a chance to talk to Mr. Collins. We're going to look into and see what the feasibility of that is. We kicked around a couple different ideas, but we're going to pursue it and see if we can maybe get some sponsors for that or something like that. Don't know what the demand will be. I think, as we understand, a few years ago, there was discussion about having a similar setup for Sawdust Days. Didn't really have any takers, but who knows? With different setup and everything, we might get that. So, we're going to pursue it, and if it's something we think is feasible, we'll let you know and talk about it. Because anything we want to do, we're going to need to publicize all the parking venues that are available, as well as anything. Getting people in and out is always the biggest challenge, and it'll be popular because it's the 4th of July. So by definition, we'll be, we'll have a lot of people down here.
Certainly, a parking map for the area probably would be a great visual to put out there for everyone. Councilmember Mugerower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know I thanked a few people in the last resolution, but I think on this one, to Mr. Dumke, and I think, is it Decades that currently owns the property, a thank you to them for allowing for this to happen on their property, and just them working together with this group as well. So a big thank you to them. And one last question, or I guess to make sure it's covered within everything you're trying to do to help them, Mr. Mauer. Obviously, we're going to have this basically right on the waterfront, and whether it's a barge, or whether it's right up on that land, and shutting down the waterway, or creating some safe space on that water passage in there, when a lot of people like to go on their boats on the 4th of July. their boats on the Fourth of July. Just making sure you guys are working with the local fishing groups and trying to get information out to them to make sure there's, they're well-informed as to where they should be staying away from, and, you know, any, any safety precautions for the, for those boating groups.
Yes, we can make sure and do that. We have good connections with the, the Oshkosh Boat Club as well, so we can definitely send them information once everything is approved.
Good. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Osby.
Thank you. Just a quick question, because obviously, the, the two resolutions go together, but I would assume that there would be a social media, Facebook page, or is there a website in which, like, the map could go up that we could let the viewers know?
I can't speak for the organization, but Lori is saying definitely yes. And whatever we can do through the city, city social media and the website, we'll definitely be doing that as well.
Okay, awesome.
All right. Any further discussion on 19-267? Seeing done, can we take the roll, please?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Paschal.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carrie Six.
Resolution 19-268, accept donations and approve agreement with Oshkosh Area Community Foundation, C.R. Meyer, for Eagle Exhibit at Menominee Park Zoo. Is there anyone registered to speak on this?
No one is registered.
Okay. Bring it to council for our motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mauer, Parks Board's talked about it, you've given us updates. Do you want to just give us the council an update and the citizens where we're at with the exhibit?
Sure. Jake, I wondered if you could pull up the conceptual design. You can see on the screen, this is conceptual design that we worked with FEH Design. FEH is the architect firm that helped us do the zoo master plan back in 2014. One of the projects that was included in the zoo master plan was an eagle exhibit. I think it was one of the lower-hanging fruits because of the cost. It was urgently estimated at costing about $150,000 back in 2014. So this is one that, as we were going through the, the plan and starting to plan, the CIP and other zoo projects, and also Tom Herrenberg found this interesting for the zoo as well, because of some of his work, as well as some other people that worked with the Boy Scouts, the Eagle Scouts, and so forth. So we started to pursue this back in 2015, our fundraising began to reach the $150,000 mark. It was a slow, slow go at first. As we got closer, we did another, or we sent out a cost estimate, and it came in because of some of the steel costs and tariffs and so forth, we're hearing it went up to about $217,000. So our fundraising, we had to shift gears again, worked closely with the community foundation, and as we got closer, we did another check of the pricing, and the cost jumped to $228,500. So we continued to fundraise. Happy to say that last week, I went to the El Trusa Club meeting, where they were able to get us up to our goal. They donated $25,000 towards this project. We've had, the entire project has essentially been fundraised. There's no city tax dollars going to this project. We have funds from the zoo, which again are from Tom and Penny Herrenberg. Every year, their contribution, a portion goes towards operation, and another portion stays with the zoo fund for future exhibits and enhancement to the zoo. We've also had, the Zoological Society has contributed a large sum of money. The community foundation board stepped up and contributed a good sum of money. So this is an entire fundraised project. And what we're looking to do is work with C.R. Meyer, similar to how we handled the pool in our otter exhibit at the zoo, and they will essentially come in and general the project for us. And it's a community foundation project, and they will, at the end, turn over and donate it back to the city.
Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Herman.
He answered my question. Thank you.
I just have one follow-up question, and that is, in the staff memo, Mr. Mauer, where we're talking about fiscal impact, we do refer to future maintenance and animal care, and, and that would be absorbed into regular operations. Can you just give a rough estimate of what that dollar amount is?
Sure. The exhibit is designed to house two eagles. Right now, we're planning for one. It's all going to depend on where we get that bird from, and it might be paired with another eagle, so up to two birds. We're estimating that it'll be an annual cost of about $2,000 per bird. So right now, we're planning about $2,000 for next year, and if we get two, that'll double.
And I just have one other request. By chance, do we have an idea or a map that we can show, like, the location of where the eagle exhibit would be located? Or if you can describe it?
I can describe it, I did not include that for Jake. If you know where the wolf exhibit is and the elk, there's essentially a boardwalk that goes between those two, it's going to be off that boardwalk. You can see the boardwalk where the individuals are standing. So it'll be down into, it's a, it's a shrub mulch area that we maintain right now, so it's space that was actually a good fit for this, and we're able to utilize some of that boardwalk or that decking from those two exhibits as well.
Excellent. All right. Any further discussion on 19-268? Seeing done, can we call the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Paschal.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carrie Six.
Next, we have council discussion and direction to City Manager and future agenda items. First up is a request to allow video presentation for the vacant council seat. It's my understanding that we've received an application. Perhaps City Manager, you can talk about that?
Yeah, one of the applicants for the vacant council seat indicated that she would not be available on May 14th, the day of the, the interviews, and she was, indicated she'd be willing to submit a video, a five-minute video for council to view, and that was not something that had crossed us before, so we thought it was appropriate to bring to council and see if that was something that you're willing to do.
Councilmember Crowsey.
I would support that, but would it be possible to get the individual's names, if we could do some emailing and asking them questions? If we have any questions about their ideas, their position in council would be?
Yeah, we can certainly provide that. You're going to get an entire package of information on May 11th.
But would they be out of the country already by then?
My understanding is that they will be, no, I don't know the answer, I'm sorry.
Because I know all the people applying are going to have an opportunity to answer questions, and I just want to give that individual the same right.
Yeah, okay. We can certainly, yeah, we can provide you who the person is. That'd be easy.
Okay, thank you.
And there may be other people, based on council's direction on this one.
So we need to give some definitive direction regarding allowing the video presentation for that council seat. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm supportive of it. I think it's important that everybody that wants to apply for the vacancy has an opportunity to present. And I agree, Councilmember Crowsey a little bit about, you know, Q and A, it's a little more difficult, maybe, because we don't exactly know when she'll be, he or she will be out of the country, but it, we want to make sure that everybody that really wants to apply for the position has the opportunity. And that's the only thing that we have to hear from the candidates, so I'm supportive of it.
Councilmember Osby.
Thank you. So I guess my question would be, is will we be aware of the applicants as they come in, so that maybe we can get a jump if they're not going to be in the country? Because I also, not from the same applicant, but a potential applicant, in which I posed the question to Ms. Lawrenson. So, you know, I guess that would be my question, is, you know, I know the cutoff is May 9th, and I guess if there's a situation like that, can we know prior to when the pack, we receive the packet?
Yeah, I don't see any reason why we couldn't provide you the names. We, we know who this person is, and you'll know them too, I'm sure. Several, at least some of you will.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll let, we'll let you know that, that's just giving you that information so you can begin your due diligence.
I appreciate it.
So Councilmember Osby, are you supportive?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
No issue at all? Yeah.
Councilmember Paschal.
Sure, so, so, if I understand it correctly, what, what we're suggesting is that they would pre-record their five-minute presentation for us, and then we would air it live?
We'll, we'll figure the technology out. We can, we discussed a couple options, but you'll have a full live video on it.
Okay, that was, that was my question. I, I, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think I wanted to clarify even further, and that is, would it be on the 14th, when we're getting the others that we would watch that? Or would it be leading up to the 14th?
No, this person indicated they would provide us with something that you would be able to have their video, and to the degree we can, we'll do our best to, you know, make the, make it available so the public can see it. It'll probably, we'll probably use our smart board, and then put it up there, and we'll perhaps zoom in a little bit. It'll, it's not, won't be the highest tech, but it'll be, it'll be pretty good tech.
And I-
Go ahead.
And I guess I just, also just wanted to clarify that, so the video present, I'm sorry, the five-minute presentations are not necessarily required, they are allowed according to our ordinance 2-5. So just, it is not a requirement, we are giving that courtesy to those applicants.
Councilmember Paschal.
Sure. So, just thinking about parity in, in, through this process, then, if we, Mr. Councilmember Crowsey's suggestion of being able to provide questions to that person in advance of the meeting, it brings up a concern of, I think, of, you know, do we ask, do we then ask every person that, that applies that same set of questions? Not necessarily in advance, but have them the opportunity to, you know, answer those questions. I'm actually talking to the council here, I think, on this one, so.
Councilmember Crowsey.
I don't think there needs to be a set of questions. Any individual that applies, we might have different questions for that individual based on their skill set, or any question on their past, or their availability, or their future availability. I think everybody's going to get different questions if we want to ask that individual ones. I don't think it's any advantage to that one person to get those questions before the other ones. At least in my opinion, that's how I look at it, asking questions.
I'm just putting it out there as a discussion piece of whether that's something we want to think about.
City Manager.
Well, as the mayor had pointed out, the presentations are optional, but the ordinance also provides that council may ask questions and answers. So I think there's an expectation, for anybody who shows up live, they'll, the expectation is council can ask as many questions as you feel is appropriate, and, and it will, I think it'll depend on who the person is, but we've, we've got it organized so that you will have the opportunity, so that there will be some of that. I think that's what Councilmember Crowsey was hoping. This person won't have the ability, that's the downside of not being present, that the Q and A can't happen, so you're trying to find a way to squeeze it in there.
I just wanted to allow them to answer questions and be on the same playing field.
Yeah. We, we benefit from technology, but it has its limitations.
Any further discussion on that? It looks like we have consensus to allow the video presentation for that vacant council seat. And next is explanation of council expectations. That would be me. Just wanted to add a couple of more details for those who are considering, considering applying for this council seat vacancy. It is one-year, the deadline is May 9th at 10:00 AM, correct? 10:00 AM, and just, I just wanted to share a little bit more detail on the kind of expectations of, the obligations for time, so that you understand that we have, obviously, the second and fourth Tuesday council meetings, but there are also typically, you know, at least two boards and commissions that one gets appointed to as a council liaison. We do have two full business days of the budget hearings. The expectation is of attendance, as well as a day or two of strategic planning. So I just wanted to share that for those who are applying. We are excited to see the new applicants come in, and I don't know if my fellow council members would like to chime in on any of that. Okay, so next is our citizen statement to council, the second opportunity. Do we have anyone registered?
No one is registered.
All right, and we do not have any additional council member announcements, so we'll move on to City Manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the council packet, you received the first quarter strategic plan update. This is the very first quarter of a two-year plan, so at this point, you're not going to see a lot. It's really more about, are we on track? And hopefully, there's nothing that we're falling behind on that early in the game, but the, after, after you turn over the, the cover page, there's just an overall summary, and 77% of our items are on track, which is probably the, the most important thing. But a good, almost a fifth of them are completed, so we can get into those as we get to our additional reports that we're working on, the KPIs. Departments have the KPIs. Our goal is to have it in a format for the second quarter, so you'll be able to see all of the KPIs as they relate to the plan. Because really, it's about the numbers that I think council was, was most concerned about. There's a lot of narrative in this report, and, and I think that that probably, while you may be interested in that, you're also looking for the key performance indicators. So staff, I just had a presentation from them today. I think we're ready for second quarter, that you'll be able to see that. And it'll also be online, that people will be able to take a look at any of our priority goals, click on those and get a, get the narrative or the accompanying key performance indicators, and then they can also look up key performance indicators by department. So while there's a lot of narrative with this one, the next report will be more of a, a summary with all the KPIs for council.
Would you say that would be somewhat of a, like a dashboard visual?
In fact, that's what it's called, so thank you for asking, Madam Mayor. Yeah, that's the whole idea, and that was, I think, was the council's direction, and it took us a while, but we're, we're real pleased with what we're, what we're doing. We've got a lot of narrative, and some of it goes on. And, and while it's, there's some good detail in there, there's also, I think the KPIs will be much easier to view and give you an idea, and give the public a snapshot of what we're trying to do, and, and the data to support it. So that's, unless there are any questions, happy to answer any if you have. Otherwise, want to give you a new item that the council added at their organizational meeting, status of follow-up items from previous council items. I will be giving, in the subsequent reports, I'll also have something visual for council in your packet. For now, I'll just give you some updates on some of these items. The alternate fee to replace special assessments, Mr. Robbie and I are meeting next week with our GIS person. Our GIS person's leaving, so we're forcing them to meet with us before they leave. But making sure that we have some of the GIS information that I think will help us capture the data that we need to, to get the special assessments changed over to, to non-special assessments. It's a little bit of work so we can get the fees in order and everything. So we expect that in May, as I reported last time.
A question on that, Mr. Roloff.
Yeah.
You're having that meeting, what kind of timeline are you looking to bring it back to council? Is this going to be more of a budget discussion item?
No, I think the idea is we'll give you an update in May, and then action within, you know, a meeting or two after that.
Yeah, because with a streak construction project season right on top of us, I'm sure there's some very concerned citizens.
Everybody who's come in with the special assessments are like, but you're not going to do them, right? And it's, we're, we really do need to work on that, because we can't promise them anything. It's a council action that's still pending. I mean, I know that the council wants us to do this, but it's something we got to get, we got to get checked off. So that's, that's a classic one to be on this list, because we really do need to get moving on that. Councilmember Mugerower asked me about it last time, and I don't think he's going to let me off the hook on this one either, so thank you.
So are you thinking, at least by first or second meeting in May, we should see a draft?
It'll be second meeting in May.
So the 28th?
28th, yes. Parks Operations Facility, Mr. Urban had provided a memo in the package. This is a follow-up to the council workshop, and the question that was raised was, if we didn't do anything because of timing or anything, what things would absolutely have to get done in the next five to six years? So Mr. Urban had put together, and this was Mr. Mauer, the range is, you know, getting up towards 225,000, I believe, the, when you total it up. The reality is that does not include things like the roof, and that could, or, I'm sorry, which one does it not include, Ray? There's other ones that, I think the concern is the roof, because that's the biggest ticket item. If we start getting leaks or having some weather issues, that could get accelerated. The reality is, is that, you know, barring any unforeseen maintenance issues, we're going to be looking at 81 to 220,000. We're still get, we still have the inefficiencies in there. That's because when Mr. Mauer moved his office over there upon hire, I said, "No, Ray." He had, he had his office down on the first floor, and the Parks Director and Parks Director's administrative assistant were the only two people. I wanted the Parks Director to be more hands-on. So we really kind of shoehorned Ray and Trish at the time into, into that building. It really wasn't designed for that purpose, and we really, we need to, to move on from that. This is one of these that's going to be a, a project that's going to depend on favorable economic conditions. You know that the, the price tag for that is, what, about five, six million?
Six million.
Yeah, so... But this is, if worse comes to worse, we absolutely have to spend this upwards of 200,000, 220,000.
And I guess just to follow up on that, then, if anyone would like to see more detail about that presentation, there was a workshop a few months back that council held on both the Parks facility and City Hall, that you can look at more detail on that. Councilmember Mugerower.
Thank you. Mr. Maurer and Mr. Urban, too. Thank you for putting that together. I know that was one of my requests, was lay it out for us. Tell us what we're going to see if we don't do anything. And in fact, we know that even if we do something, we're still going to see some of these costs. At least, we should know, the other five of you sitting up here. Even if we chose to put something on, you know, 21, 22 CIP, we're still going to incur some of these holding costs, some of these basic maintenance costs just to keep the building up to date or functional at the very minimum, I think would be an okay way to put it. What are... What staff's vision at the moment for when you're placing this on CIP? Obviously, this is a budget thing towards the end of the year, but you also need to have some guidance from us as to what we would like to see, take into account favorable economic conditions. What are you expecting to put that on for what kind of year? What are we talking?
Sure. I don't intend to be vague at all, so I can't specifically answer that question, because the favorable economic conditions is a pretty vague term. What it means is we have enough that we can borrow more to build a building like this without getting our debt managed... Our debt level up too high. Too bad Mr. Taves already left. He could probably help us a little bit with that. But specifically, in terms of our city buildings in need of consideration, the council had a report on the City Hall building. We're in the midst of doing public safety, and fire will shortly go after that. I put this building above all of those other items, in my opinion. And that's not just because Mr. Maurer's at my left and could kick me from this vantage point. We've had this discussion for a number of years. There are safety issues there, legitimate safety issues. There's a lot of inconvenience issues, for example, in this building. But we've addressed the real safety issues, and I'm proud of the work that staff has done to do that. But there's some of this stuff that's just gotten to the point where it's unavoidable. So in my opinion, if we can do it, this is the first building that I would bring forward to council. And I want you to be aware of that, because there are a lot of needs, and public safety is a huge need, and they're probably after that. City Hall kind of falls down the list, because we have jumped on some things here. It's really more, we have no... We really don't have any meeting space, but we get by. This is... There are some unacceptable things there. When you think about the plumbing and electrical systems, the quote in the report is, "Building and electrical systems..." Or plumbing, excuse me. Plumbing and electrical systems are poor. That's pretty bad. We need to... So I hope that answers the question without getting into specifically what year I'm going to put it in the CIP. I don't know the answer to that.
We do have two other council members who'd like to ask some questions. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Hold on, I do have one follow-up, if you don't mind. I know that you can't put a number on it, or can't put a year on it or a date on it. But at least just keep this in mind. I don't think we can wait to a budget cycle for you... And I don't want to use the word spring, but you can't bring this in middle of October and say, by the way, we should spend $6 million, and we're going to vote on it in two weeks. We need to make sure that those numbers that we've talked about, the finances, the debt, the things that we're working on, that you're taking that into account and giving us a heads-up as to, here's some expectations, or here's some assumptions that, as we come into those, into this year and into the next year, too.
This will require a lot of planning, and I would anticipate... Mr. Maurer reminded me, one of the things we talked about, similar to what we did with the Public Works Garage, is phasing it in. So you don't just, you know, throw a phase in in a couple of weeks. This would be more... If we can pull it off, it would probably be more, I'm looking at doing this in year two and three of the CIP, so that we can plan for a year and a half before we get going on that. Design might be, at best, year one, but we've got a lot of work done on that already. So that's what I would anticipate. This would not be, oh, my gosh, we got to get this done. We know the things that might happen. That 81,000 to 220,000 dollar number in Mr. Urban's letter, those are the ones where we may have to go. Now, if the improvements are imminent, gosh, I don't want to spend that money. You know, that would just be absolutely money thrown out the window. So those are the things we'll try to balance out.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess that's my concern, Mr. Roloff. I think we're just putting a Band-Aid on it. I think it's time we do it. Figure it out how we do it. If we have to cut something else out, we cut something else out. But there's three departments that work out of that building. There's no sense spending the taxpayer's money, 81,000 to 220,000 dollars, in three years from now, we're going to build a new building. I think we move forward now, as much as we can move forward with. We know we need a new Parks building. It's inadequate. It doesn't meet our current needs, just like the Central Garage did, and we waited how many years to do that, because we kept pushing that. Previous councils pushed that down the road.
We only waited 25 years.
I don't want to do that here either, and we've been doing that. This building really isn't worth sticking 82,000 to 220,000 dollars into. It is waste of money. I just think you figure out how we do it now and move it forward, so that maybe in the next budget, or at least the following budget, we can approve the building and go. I just think we're wasting money.
Councilmember Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. So Mr. Roloff touched on a couple of things, because going back to, gosh, when we did the City Garage, I remember when I came on eight years ago, both the City Garage and the Parks building were in the same condition as we're talking about now, only advanced it eight years. And so that's exactly, we took a multi-year approach to it. And so one of the things that I know came up probably within the last two council meetings is that, obviously, we've talked about, you know, our CIP limit of what we borrow. And how that came about was actually when Mr. Peck and I were on long-range finance. And I want to say that was probably a good five or six years ago, and that was something we talked about, because obviously, we've hit that goal sooner than we anticipated. You know, do we keep it the same? Do we lower it? Do we go up? And I think that may factor into this. And so, you know, I'm not sure if this is something that maybe we want to task long-range finance with, to maybe kind of look at it comprehensively, both from the standpoint of, you know, what are the needs here, and is it worthwhile to increase our CIP so that this is going over a multi-year approach, so that it's not hit all at once? So I think there's something there. And I also did mention to the mayor, you know, I was on long-range finance for about four or five years, and went through a number of those processes. So I did offer to her, although that will not be a border commission that I'll be serving on, but if at any point in time I can add any insight or help or participate in any way, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's... That kind of discussion and feedback is much appreciated. Gives me some good feedback.
So if I could just follow up on that, then, it sounds like we would bring this back as an agenda item with a little more detail.
We can certainly do that.
And at that time, perhaps, we can discuss...
Give specific direction.
Give it on a long-range finance or to staff. All right. Looks like you have a couple more items, City Manager.
The Oshkosh Corporation update is in there, with spring having sprung finally. The road work is starting. You can actually see Oshkosh Corporation's... There's lights on into the evening, so things are going well over there. Don't have any other report on that other than what's in the memo provided by Mr. Davis. Transition to monthly utility billing. We had mentioned something in the newsletter, and I just wanted to repeat it, because there was something that we didn't really clarify too well. The transition to the billing, we have to readjust and reset to a new date. And as a result of that, people who were getting their three-month bill was probably closer to, with some people, to a three-and-a-half-month bill. Sometimes we're 90. Sometimes, I think, we've gone as much as 93 days with a quarterly bill. Some of these quarterly bills were as many as 108 days. It's not that you're... It's just about when you're paying it and how you're paying it. The whole idea is to get us to a... To get us to a single monthly bill next month. That's... We're on track for that, but there's been the adjustment with the transition. I got a one-month bill, but my one-month bill was a little more. It was like a month and a half as well. So a lot of people are seeing that adjustment. We wanted to let the council know and let the public know that when you're getting your bills, and they've been getting them like over the last few days, which is an unusual time to receive it, this is why we're doing it. It's all about the transition. We're hitting social media, but we need to hit every venue we can, because we can't cover everybody in just one spot. So appreciate council just helping pass the word on that it's a one-time adjustment, and then we have a monthly billing, which is really what our goal was all along.
For a number of years?
Just, yeah, only since you were on the council. And I think even before that, with long-range finance. Project schedule for the Lake Shore Park Master Plan. We added that into your package. It's a schedule from the Smith Group. I'm just going to highlight a couple of big items, and certainly ask any questions that you'd like. The idea is that there'll be at May 6th, that's a Monday, Advisory Park Board kickoff meeting, a little bit of visioning session. It's an open meeting. We can... And that one is televised, so people certainly can watch and everything. But, you know, you want to provide input, you know, certainly let Park Board members know, because they're going to be doing a visioning on that. The Polco online questionnaire will open on May 17th and close on June 5th, and then we'll begin compiling results. Those results will go to a public visioning meeting. Park Board will be in attendance, but we're going to invite stakeholders, boards, committees. That is a public input session, but with the more people, the merrier. That is absolutely where we want to get public input, and we'll share the Polco results at that time. And then the big joint meeting, in order to conserve on cost, because every time you bring a consultant, and you're going to have to pay for that consultant, we're having a joint meeting of the Advisory Park Board, the Bike and Pet Advisory Committee, and the Sustainability Advisory Board. And that will be open to the public, but it'll be a working meeting with all three groups to refine the program and start talking about conceptual design alternatives. So that's... Those are the big items, and we're going to be talking about these as the weeks go on, because we need to keep that on the forefront. We need people to... This won't be any good unless we get a lot of public input. And there will be some differing opinions on that. We need to hear every differing opinion, so we can sort it all out. And the idea is that the Park Board will eventually approve something that will be forwarded on probably at their September meeting. So it'll be a busy activity throughout the summer.
I just have a couple of follow-up questions on that. First of all, it looks like the one and only public input session is scheduled for June 10th, which I believe coincides with a number of graduations and that kind of thing. Is there going to be a second opportunity for a public input? That's at the Advisory Park Board. I'm talking about public participation, number one. And number two, if one is unable to attend a public participation session, who should citizens email their comments to, in addition to council members, in terms of giving that input?
I can address some if you'd like. All the meetings will allow public input. So the one that you're specifically talking about on June 10th, what Smith Group is looking at, that's going to be what I would call a working meeting. They'll probably do some small charrettes or small group activities. The public, all these meetings are open to the public, all of them Parks Board. There will be an opportunity for citizens to give input at all of those meetings. Same thing with the joint meeting on July 8th, open to the public. They can ask questions of any of those boards and committees that are involved. They can bring ideas forward. So I want to make sure that everybody's aware throughout the process. As far as getting contact with anybody, we can get that information out, but I would suggest they email me. We will coordinate anything that comes forward, and I'll be able to compile it and get it to the Smith Group contacts as well.
Thank you.
Okay. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. And Deputy Mayor Herman has a motion for us to go into closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The common council may convene in the closed session to discuss the purchase of properties and/or investment of public funds within the city's South Shore Redevelopment District pursuant to Section 19.85, P.1, P.1 of the Wisconsin State statutes, where competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Call of favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, rule call.
Rule call, please.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Osby?
Aye.
Mugerower?
Aye.